A pledge to the flag, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There have been no executive sessions since our last meeting, so at this point I would like to open up the floor to communication from citizens. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the board, please raise your hand and be recognized. And if you are on Zoom and would like to address the board, please click the raise hand button to be recognized. Name an address for the record.
Maria Swamley, 3366 Barwood Road, York, PA. Congratulations, you did it.
Thank you. I never know what's gonna happen. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to our civil engineering report. Diana?
Good evening, gentlemen. I have nothing to add or update on the report that we've submitted, so if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I had one. So what's involved with the effect on the interceptor design? I-83 widening?
Oh, yeah, the 83, yeah, okay, so it's mostly...
Sounded like there's a change?
There is, yes, because they're doing the expansion now. It's not going to be on both sides of 83. It's all gonna be, I would call it, to like, to the north, to the... If you're familiar with where the two tanks are in that section, those two are gonna come down, and that's about where the conflict starts. Now, I wouldn't say conflict, but in that area, it gets tight, okay? And then, like, to come around the corner of that building, so it's gonna be tight in there, we have to move some things around. And then, where the line from Spring Garden Township comes across and enters into the interceptor, that is all different now, too, because the bridge is different. So where we thought we were going far enough from the stream by going out around, we weren't. They had some issues with the bridge design, so right now, we've got to move the planned sewer line from Spring Garden Township.
And that's in the section of 83 that actually goes to the west before it goes back?
Yes, right, right. That's why I said it's like, on the north side of that, because it's the horisone.
Between there and Route 30.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
From North Sherman Street, in front of, like, between 83 and Brewery Products, that whole stretch.
And they're only widening to the north, then, not to the south?
Right, right, right.
Aren't we gonna move the stream and everything else on the other side? Or is that not on the other side of the road there?
That is on the other side of the road, and I think all those plans are still in place to do that. They still have some flood work that they're doing over on that side of the work.
Anybody else? Thank you. All right, John, engineering report.
Just a couple of quick updates. First, on Davie's Drive, today we got an email. I know the manager was trying to move the schedule for the signal contractor, that would be the railroad signal, not a traffic signal, up. And today, they said, surprise, we're gonna be there a week early. So September 11th, the signal contractor will be onsite, and they estimate two weeks worth of work. So I forwarded that to York Excavating, and so that's certainly good news, because normally schedules, as you know, slide backward now forward. Also, with Davie's Drive, we are gonna have an add-out for some signal improvements at Davie's in Market and handicap-accessible ramps, so that'll be occurring pretty quickly. And then finally, we have that TASA grant. It took us a while to get our environmental clearance. We made some tweaks to the plan, but our obligation was to get it ready for bid, is the wording in the PennDOT publications, by the end of August, and it's pretty much ready. So we're on schedule there. If there are any questions regarding those updates or anything else in my report, I'd be glad to discuss those with you if you'd like. TASA, T-A-S-A, Transportation Alternative Set Aside, I think, something like that.
Maybe this is more a question for Public Works, but do we have enough barricades at Davie's Drive to keep people from poking around down there on both ends?
Yeah. I drove out there. You can't get there.
Yeah, there's a concrete... They have the big blocks sitting out there in the middle of the road, so...
On the north, or on the south side, there is, but what about on the north side?
I know you have to get down to 911, but I can't remember what is between 911...
When I was down last, they had equipment across the roadway, but I don't think there were any barricades.
Yeah, maybe we should talk to York X to prevent people...
You may wanna...
But once you get down to the tracks, you go nowhere. You're done, so...
Right.
Yeah, all right. We'll mention it to York X to secure that area. Anything else?
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
All right, next we have our consent agenda, items A through H. Are there any items on here anyone would like to have removed for further discussion?
I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through H.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we're at bids, proposals, contracts, and agreements. Smith Elliott Kearns &amp; Company LLC auditing proposal for the years ending December 31 of '23, '24, '25, and '26.
Mr. Chairman, the current agreement we have with S.E.K. ran through year 2022, which they just presented to the board at a recent meeting. This would cover this calendar year and 2024, and the board has the option to accept year three and year four, or none of them, or one of them.
Comments?
I think it sounds good.
Which?
There's value in maintaining your incumbent. There's a lot of value to that when it comes to auditing services.
But is there a point that they get too close to the client?
Can be, yes.
More into switch-up?
Yeah, I don't think we're there yet.
I like the four years myself.
Is that locking our prices?
It does.
Yes. Yep.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the auditing proposal with Smith Elliott &amp; Kearns Company for the years ending December 31st, 2023, '24, '25, and '26.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have subdivisions and land development. We have Land Development 2022-0005, 4100, Lincoln Highway LLC.
Good evening to the Board of Supervisors. This is a plan that you've seen in the subdivision portion of the plan a couple months back, which the board did approve, and it's in the process of getting signed by Hellem Township. And then, when that's returned to Springinsbury Township, we will be recording that subdivision plan. This is the land development portion of this plan, and this is strictly for Lot 1, located in Springinsbury Township, with a small piece actually in Hellem, but then there's Lot 2 that's all in Hellem Township. So that's what we'll be discussing this evening. This plan has a longstanding place here in the township that dates back all the way to 2020, so it's taken a while to get to this point where it's in front of you this evening. They're proposing to construct a 75,000-square-foot warehouse on proposed Lot 1, and we have representation this evening from Neil Metzger with Site Design Concepts to discuss the plan itself. We do have it up here on the screen. I'm gonna show Mr. Metzger quickly how to use the pointer. If you have any questions of me, I'm certainly here happy to answer them, as well as Mr. Luciani, but we're gonna turn it over to Mr. Metzger to speak to the plan. This moves it around. Back and forth on the plan sheets, and there's 14 there, so without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Metzger.
Can you zoom in and out?
Yes, you can.
Ah, don't worry about that. Hi, good evening. Yes, I was here in May with the... It's a 10-acre industrial property that's right at the border with Hellem Township, essentially half in Hellem Township, half in Springinsbury. We're subdividing it essentially down the municipal boundary, and we anticipate hopefully getting that plan recorded here in the next couple of weeks here in terms of the subdivision plan. So this is the Lot 1 land development plan, which is in Springinsbury Township. We've worked throughout the last three years with the township and the township engineer, and essentially, there's virtually no comments left that are plan-related. I believe there was two comments. One was about a four-foot planting strip between the street and the proposed public sidewalk. It is actually four feet that is on the plans, but it's not labeled, so we will add a label to the plans to address that comment. The other one, we are requesting a waiver from. It was about extending the concrete sidewalk across the proposed low-volume industrial driveway, which PennDOT has already permitted, and we have a permit for it. It's been reviewed and approved by PennDOT. As Mr. Howman has indicated, it's a 75,000-square-foot warehouse with associated parking, loading spaces, and stormwater management, as well as the required landscaping. We're not requesting any waivers or modifications of the township's landscaping regulations. There's four waivers that are requested. One is preliminary plan. We're requesting to process this as a preliminary and final plan at the same time. That's 28910. The next is the plan size and scale. We're requesting approval to have provided a 30-by-42-inch plan so that we can have the clarity be slightly better than a 24-by-36-inch plan. That's 28913A. We're requesting a waiver from 28927C, which is about having a concrete apron across the driveway from curb to curb, which PennDOT typically doesn't want. This driveway would be consistent with the driveway, the new driveway I heard that serves this facility, so we're requesting that waiver. And the last one is related to monuments to be concrete, which is 28926, and we're not requesting... We're just requesting not to have to remove existing rebar iron pipe markers and place concrete monuments since, for corners that are already existing and, you know, marked the property corners. So the... This is the proposed plan. You can see it's the big square, little bit rectangle, proposed warehouse building and the parking and loading facilities that are around the building. Essentially, you can circulate entirely around the proposed building, and we do have access over to the Hellem Township Road, Beverley Drive. And so if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer questions.
There are a number of conditions on here. Have you addressed all of those?
Yes, so the first is, we have... We've already received approval from DEP and from the Eastern York County Sewer Authority, which is actually gonna service this particular Springinsbury Township property. It's just over the Knoll. I believe there was no prior township properties that were serviced by Eastern York County Sewer Authority, so there was an intermunicipal agreement that was entered into, processed. So all the paperwork's in place. It's been approved by both the sewer capacity provider as well as DEP for the requested sewer capacity. So I'll have to get with Mr. Howman and Mr. Luciani and verify exactly what needs to be done, but as far as I know, I think we got most of the stuff in order for that one. The second condition was about putting the tax parcel numbers on the plans, which until the subdivision plan gets recorded, we won't know that information. One of them will keep the current number, the other one will have a different number, so once that's done, we'll put the correct tax parcel numbers on the two land development plans, one in Hellem, one in Springinsbury. The third condition is about getting the owner to sign the plan with the proper wording, so we'll get that done as soon as we're sure that there's no more plan revisions. And then, the rest is about making some minor changes to the public improvement security estimate that was already submitted and reviewed by First Capital, and then, at that point, once the amount is established, we will provide the needed bond or letter of credit or whatever is acceptable to the township. The next one is about, I think, this is about after the improvements are done and the requirement for the maintenance bond that would be for 18 months at 15% of the cost of the actual construction, so that's, I think, more of a requirement as the building permit gets closed out. And that was seven, that was six and seven. Number eight is about a joint access easement, which a draft has been created. Once again, we're waiting for the subdivision plan to get recorded so that the wording within the shared access easement agreement can be finalized in terms of the proper references for tax parcels, et cetera. Both municipal solicitors have reviewed the draft so that we will get that taken care of as soon as we get the subdivision plan approved. And I talked about nine. We have a four-foot grass strip. Ten is just adding, I guess, some additional spot elevations to assist the contractor in constructing the access drive properly in terms of grades. And the last one was about extending the concrete sidewalk through the driveway, which we oppose that and would request that we be granted a waiver to not do that.
So, question I have is the grade of the access drive versus the grade required for a sidewalk for access?
2% max side slope, yeah.
Right.
We have done that. That's part of the HOP documents that are not part of this plan. The HOP plan set that was reviewed in extreme detail took quite some time. A lot of comments about the handicapped access and the ramps on both sides. They show a lot of detail. We'd be actually... We'll provide Mr. Luciani a copy of those plans, but yes, we have no more than 5% longitudinal slope and no more than 2% cross-slope across the crosswalk that crosses that driveway, as well as I'll see the handicap ramps and concrete sidewalks on both sides.
Are we good with that?
We typically, you know... I think the Planning Commission had reviewed this waiver, and I think we discussed it at the last meeting in a little more detail, but one of the reasons why the township has always required a two per... You know, we want to be ADA compliant, and part of the problem is, you know, the contractor is worried about constructing the driveway, and the driveway comes off Market Street, then goes up, then they have a five-foot area for the sidewalk. It would be a blacktop sidewalk, and then they go up into like a 5% slope. And even though the design highlights and they have a lot of more spot elevations, a lot of times, the contractor just goes in and paves the driveway up through the road, and now the driveway and the sidewalk is 5%. And, you know, the incorrect thing about that is that the sidewalk, as Neil mentioned, can't be more than 2%, and then the... That becomes a violation in the ADA rules, and so we've... In the township, we've required this concrete to be extending through that area, and that way, they'll build it out of concrete, and when they're paving, they pave up to the sidewalk and pave up to the... Beyond the sidewalk, and that assures them that they're not gonna melt it in with everything else. So you could put all the notes in the world on the plan, but a lot of times, the contractor is... His job is to put the driveway in and doesn't really worry about ADA compliance. That's the next guy's problem.
So Charlie, I'm hearing more about these nasty lawyers that go around looking for ADA out-of-compliance and then bring lawsuits against whoever they can get money out of. Know anything about them?
No. John did send me an article about lawyers with rulers.
Lawyers with rulers?
Yes, to take measurements.
So who's... What happens in the future if somebody decides that it was 3% and my wheelchair rolled off the side and went down the 5% slope into Market Street?
What would happen?
Yeah, who's at fault?
Well, you're gonna name everybody, right? Anybody that had anything to do with putting that ramp in here.
Would any of that change dramatically if it was a concrete sidewalk across there instead of part of the McAdam?
That, I don't know, that's an engineering thing, right? I don't know. The rule is 2%, it's 2% no matter how you do it.
So if you put it in at 2% and then repave the thing at some point in the future and it's no longer 2%, if it was built to our specs and built to the plan and then was changed by the owner at some point in the future, is the township still liable?
No, I wouldn't think so.
Yet this is... What you have is approved by PennDOT.
Correct, it's... And mine is...
Yeah, PennDOT's not gonna get sued.
So... But our... The PennDOT plan is compliant with the township in terms of the degree of angle of the sidewalk, correct?
The crosswalk, yes, is there are... As he indicated, the, you know, the contractor may not follow the plans, but that can happen on numerous items, but yes, we show it coming off of the gutter line, which is essentially the curb line that, you know, extends all the way down through there, and then we come... I think we come 2% the whole way from that gutter line to the back of the crosswalk, and then at the next...
And then...
Then there's another angle point that starts transitioning up at a steeper slope from that point, so it's not like a shed... We're not coming up and then flat and then continuing up. There's actually a 2% grade that goes...
All the way past that?
From the... Yes, from the gutter line up to the back of the crosswalk.
I guess I don't have a problem with that, then.
And we would inspect that work, correct?
We would.
So we would...
It would be up to us to catch it?
At that point, correct. And PennDOT theoretically will be inspecting all of it as well.
Well, that's true, too, yeah.
I've seen many concrete ramps be ripped out, at least on the sides, back when they first started getting their smart levels out.
So then, if I hear you correctly, if we grant the one waiver, we don't need Condition 11? Which is the five?
Probably not, because the waiver would actually take away that requirement.
Questions, comments?
I have one. Is the access point on East Market Street going to be a full-turn access for trucks? So they're gonna be able to come out there and...
Yes.
Turn left across the eastbound traffic, huh?
Correct.
Not requiring a light or anything there?
No. PennDOT frowns upon lights at private driveways. And I believe, is that a... That's a private driveway on the other side, but I'll see it was analyzed, there was a traffic impact assessment done. I mean, in reality, this is a fairly small warehousing facility. I mean, the amount of trucks that are going in and out might be one an hour, depends what's in there. So it was evaluated, and they don't feel that there's going to be an issue. Site distance was thoroughly evaluated based on trucks, not just vehicles, and the desirable site distance, and we do meet those requirements with PennDOT.
Are the trucks on Lot 2 planning on using that access point as well, or will they be exiting onto Campbell Road?
That is a one-way in, so they will actually... The trucks will go... Now, non-trucks can exit on Beverley Drive and exit to Campbell to head south or north, but no, the trucks would also use the Lincoln Highway driveway.
From Lot 2.
Correct. Yeah, that process started, I think, in 2020 with PennDOT as well.
So is facility is that?
That one's like 66,000 square feet.
Is that also a warehouse?
It's a warehouse. Right now, there's no users. Obviously, you've seen how... It depends who wants to lease it, and then obviously, then Mr. Howman's gonna determine whether it's permitted use, but...
So that one's in Hellem, right?
Correct, it's in Hellem, yes.
He won't be deciding that.
Yeah, correct. He won't be deciding that, but manufacturing, I think, is a conditional use in Hellem, so they would have to go to their supervisors to get any type of manufacturing operation approved over there.
I think we have a condition in the documents. Our ordinance requires two ways in and out, so if... And he's showing a common access easement for the vehicles. If for some reason they couldn't get out on the Market Street for some... And they needed to get out...
They could.
We would want that... I think we may have put it in the bond, that the road be guaranteed so that we have two ways to get in and out from Lot 1, and that would be true for Lot 2. But our ordinance requires those two points of access, and I think we did put that in the bond value.
I think you requested us to modify it so that we include, I guess, all the pavement within that shared access easement.
Correct, right. And then, if Hellem requires to bond it, we could release that. I don't want to double-bond it. I just want to make sure that the road gets built in a reasonable amount of time.
Don, questions? No? Anybody else?
So let me clarify just again. Do you need then Condition 9 if the waivers are granted?
Yeah, I don't know if that was just label it. Like I said, the grass strip, I went into the CAD drawing or actually onto the plan and measured it throughout the entire length within Hellem as well as Springinsbury, and from the back of the curb to the sidewalk is actually like four foot, one inch, or something like that.
Right, so that's met on the CAD?
It is met. I don't know if we specifically labeled it, but we can add that label as well. Just so it's 100% clear, it's a four-foot wide grass strip.
Yeah, but nine is conditioned on showing it. It is shown.
It... I think what they're saying, labeling it as four foot.
Yeah, but that's not what this says, so we either change this or take it.
It's, it's, I'm checked.
Then just change show to label. Label the four-foot grass strip between the roadway and proposed five-foot sidewalk.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to loan development 2020-0005, 4100 Lincoln Highway, I move to approve land development plan following waivers, sections 289-10, 289-13A, 289-27C, and 289-26.
Modifications and waivers.
Modifications and waivers.
Have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to land development plan 2020-0005, I move to approve the plan following to the following conditions. One, section 289-11.B-8, section 289-11.B-22, section 289-11.B-27, section 289-12.C, section 289-38B, section 289-38-F1, section 289-38-F2, section 289-41.J11.C. Condition nine to label the four-inch grass strip between the roadway and proposed five-foot sidewalk on Lincoln Highway.
Four inch?
I'm four foot, yeah. Four foot. Show this, condition ten, show the proposed spot elevations on the access drive profile for construction.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Just put the spots on it, if they're on the HOP.
Um, communication from supervisors. Anybody have anything? Charles?
I do, I do. So, I just wanted to also kind of like echo some of the comments from citizens here this evening, that we are here now in our revamped and renovated township building, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to recognize all the employees who suffered on that transitional move up to the sewer treatment plant for all of their work. It was a pleasure to be here on Friday to welcome some of them back to the building, and so certainly appreciate all of their work as they made that move out there, worked there for all those many months, and came back. And I also wanted to recognize our township manager, Mark Hodgkinson, for all of his tireless work in putting this building plan together, reporting on its progress to board, giving us the updates on, and making the key decisions on change orders, and getting this project complete. So congratulations to all of you who made this building possible.
You're here.
Thanks, Charles. Don, anything?
Nope.
Uh, nothing to add to my written report.
Anything more on Bs?
No more Bs.
I have nothing to add to my written report.
I did have a question on the Parks and Rec report. I was curious, is, is it possible to have Brandy, at some point, give us some numbers as to who participated in our Parks and Recreation program, the number of attendees at our concert?
Sure.
Try to add a little bit more metrics to it and so forth.
Yep.
And in one comment, I did receive a comment from a constituent who is very happy with our Parks and Recs program, loves it, thought the price is very fair, their children loved it, and we're just glad to see that it was back. So, kudos to Parks and Rec for that program this year.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that. I mean, we went down to a number of the concerts in the concert series, and it was fantastic. We had a lot of good comments, it was well-represented. Really good job that Brandy did in that.
We did as well, and had the same experience, it was terrific.
Fireworks were good, Mark.
Mark, I'm going to continue to nag, though, if I, if I can, on the, the Griffin, Stevens, and Lee. When, when, now that we're in our building, are we closer to getting our grant money?
I would like to say yes, but I haven't heard from, the last that we heard from that group, there's an, there's an intermediate, it's a private firm that the state hires to make sure the app, or the awardee gets everything in line and submitted properly. The last that, communication I had with them is they were going back to the Office of Budget to combine everything into one. So everything that we submitted qualified. And I don't know if it was because that's when the budget wasn't being passed, or there was no response back from the Office of the Budget. So, I'll reach out to that intermediate group and see if they can check with the Office of Budget.
My only other concern was, I know Abby was a strong partner and helper with you. Are you, are you getting that kind of support still?
Yes.
Yeah, good, good.
Is there any concern of a risk that we don't get that money?
I don't think that that's the case.
It's just taking longer than we were hoping.
It's taking, and I've heard that for other RACP recipients. Taking longer than-
It is taking longer to process, a lot of them. We are not the only ones, is what I'm hearing.
But I will check with that. I forget their name off the top of my head, but I'll check with them.
Thanks, Mark.
Any other questions for the manager? Ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 2023-02, authorizing execution of cable franchise agreement between Springersbury Township and Shenandoah Cable Television LLC, Chantel.
Mr. Chairman, this was brought to the board presentation several months ago. Chantel is new to the area, but not newly in business. The agreement was reviewed by Charlie Roush and Coen Law Group. No issues were found, and this is, this agreement's very similar to the agreement that we have with Comcast Cable. And there is a representative, Kirk, is here from Chantel, if there are any questions for him.
When's it hitting, Barwood Road?
You, you can-
No, just asking when it's going to hit my street.
Uh, we hope to have, a good evening to the township officials and residents. My name's Kirk Cosco with Chantel, representing Chantel Glow Fiber, Chantel Communications. So we hope to have construction started eighteen to twenty-four months. We have a lot of activity. I was counting up the number of municipalities in the, in York County, and if, if this passes this evening, it will be number twelve. So, so we have a lot of, a lot of work, and we've had a lot of work in York Township, which is pretty much completed. We've started in Spring Garden, and we have three or four that are going to be starting this fall, Red Lion, Dallas Town, in that area. So, we just keep moving, you know, from one municipality on to the next, so.
So how, how does it work? I mean, how does somebody get hooked up in, with Chantel? Do you just do it?
So we would come in and build a distribution system through the neighborhoods, and then it would basically be in front of residents' homes or businesses, and they would contact us, and then we would do an installation.
Is that underground distribution, or is it aerial?
If the existing utilities are aerial, then we would follow the aerial. If they're underground, then we would go underground.
And I assume there would be a marketing campaign once you're ready to start accepting customers.
Absolutely, and we're, we, we kind of turn, we call them LCPs, and they're, they're groups of about two hundred homes. So as we, we build that, we turn that up and start marketing that. So we don't have to wait till the entire project is done to start offering service to the residents. And as we talked about before, it's a complete fiber network, fiber to the home, all the way into the inside of the home. So, state-of-the-art, so. And we're excited to be here this evening, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt ordinance 2023-02, ordinance of the township, authorizing the execution of cable franchise agreement between the township and Chantel Cable Television LLC.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have resolution number 2023-38, designating township manager as authorized signatory for execution of documents, notices, and contracts, and management of project through PennDOT's reimbursement agreement, RAS system.
Mr. Chairman, PennDOT, like most organizations, has been moving to electronic format of everything versus paper, and their reimbursement agreements is no different. So, this resolution would authorize the township manager to sign agreements electronically, but only after the township manager brought that specific agreement in front of the board. It would, this would eliminate passing a resolution each and every time there was a reimbursement agreement to happen.
So this is really two parts. We're going to do the resolution, number thirty-eight, and then we're going to-
Authorize me-
Vote to authorize you to re, to sign this reimbursement.
For the bridge on Industrial Highway. And that bridge, if you recall, is the bridge that will be, it's a township bridge that's needs replaced, it will be replaced a hundred percent with federal funds. So this agreement's basic, the federal government already gave the state the funds for this. We have to kind of authorize the state that they can go and use the money they already have on our behalf. Kind of bureaucratic step here.
But the good news is, we don't have to do it.
Correct.
Engineering, everything-
Everything's covered, they're going to take care of it.
First Capital will be involved while I'm involved with this project, that won't be reimbursable. So anything that John does to-
Make sure they do it right.
Will be not reimbursable.
We were going to have to spend some money in deck replacement in the short run, so I think that's a great deal for the township that we can now avoid as it's under design. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for adoption of resolution 2023-38, authorizing the township manager to execute documents through PennDOT's RAS system.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Need to do the second hand?
Next, yes, authorization for township manager to sign the reimbursement agreement for the bridge replacement, MPMS 117013.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for authorization for the township manager to sign the reimbursement agreements for the bridge replacement, MPMS 117013, Industrial Highway, over three M. Run.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we have old business. Any update on the traffic calming measures on Tenth, Eleventh, and Whiteford?
Mr. Craybill's crew installed the speed humps in that neighborhood.
Have you received any complaints about the speed humps?
Not about the speed humps specifically, no.
What have you received complaints about?
The warning signs that we have to put up warning people of a speed hump was put in the road right of way, but the specific individual didn't appreciate us putting it in the road right of way.
In front of their house.
In front of their house. So, we moved it to another spot nearby, but, so it was settled.
Thank you.
But that's the only, only concern we received, and Denny said that some of the neighbors gave thumbs up as they were driving through while our guys were putting them up, so we'll see.
Good. Anything else on here we need to talk about this evening? We're getting dangerously close to strategic planning time. Thank you, everyone.